You see?
Councilor Holmes?
Here.
Councilor Hobbs?
Here.
Councilor McCray?
Here.
Councilor Chernoshenko?
Present.
Councilor Hume?
Here.
Consigliere Blay?
Present.
Councilor Thompson?
Present.
Councilor Moffett?
Here.
Siedroche?
Here.
Councilor Hubley?
Here.
Mayor Watson?
You see?
Le Coram et ten, Monsieur Lemar.
You have the quorum?
Confirmation of minutes, adoption of process verbal, le neuf juillet deux mille quatorze, the ninth of July twenty fourteen, carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declarations de conflits d'intérêt, none. Communications as printed in the agenda, regrets, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, mention pour ta présentation de rapport. Councilors Hume, seconded by Councilor Fleury, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Fleury, that the report from the City Clerk Solicitor entitled, Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motion for the Period Ending Twenty Seven of August and Planning Committee Reports Seventy Four A and Seventy Five be received and considered.
Carried. City Clerk and Solicitor Department, service de griffier, status update, council inquiries for the period ending August twenty second, twenty fourteen, received. Committee reports, planning committee report number seventy four A, rapport numéro soixante quatorze, Comité de l'urbanisme. Item two, city initiated official plan and zoning bylaw amendment regarding building heights in Canada. We have a motion, we have a couple of motions. One is by Councilor Wilkinson, seconded by Councilor Hubley. If you'd like to introduce this, Councilor Wilkinson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is basically a technical amendment when it was done at committee. They used all of Block Nine for having an addition, and it's really was only supposed to be the part of it. There's two pieces there that are in that block that was on the way on the four seventeen. So it's simply to take it and have only the part that was supposed to have this amendment have it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? I believe the Chair Planning is...
I'm sorry, I don't know nothing about this.
Okay.
It came from, yeah, it came from city staff to...
You ask your attorney, then I'm not going to go talk.
So who is here to speak from staff to confirm that this is nothing more than a technical issue?
Mr. Mayor, staff supports this motion presented.
Any other comments on the motion by Wilkinson and Hubley? Carried. Now, Councilor Hubley has a deferral motion. Councilor Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, what I'd like to do is defer, I'll read it out quickly. Whereas the city has received submissions in respect to the owners of four twenty and four thirty Hazeldean with respect to the proposed zoning changes, and whereas the Ward Council, myself, has indicated that I support the opportunity for further discussions between the two parties, therefore be it resolved that the further consideration of this item as amended be deferred to the council meeting of September tenth. Mr. Mayor, we're very close to reaching an agreement between the two parties, so I offered to host the meeting if they would come together before the next meeting, so I would appreciate the support of council.
Okay, does anyone have... The deferral, carried. Thank you, councilors. The next item is number three, official plan omnibus, modification d'ordre général du plan, au plan officiel. My understanding is Councilor Blowis has a motion. Oh, you hold it? Okay. We'll hold that one. Item number four, planning committee report number seventy five, rapport numéro soixante quinze de comité de l'urbanisme, development charges, affordable housing update, redévance des managements, mise à jour de logements aboldables. Carried. Thank you. Item number five, zoning bylaw amendment five nine one Long Fields Drive, modification règlement de zonage cinq neuf un promenade Long Fields. Item number six, zoning bylaw part of nineteen and twenty-three Bachmann Terrace, modification de règlement de zonage parti de dix-neuf et de vingt-trois terrasses Bachmann. Councilor Hubley has a motion, I believe.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the planning committee at its meeting of August twenty first, twenty fourteen, recommended refusal of the rezoning application in respect to nineteen twenty-three Bachmann Terrace, whereas the Planning Act requires the reasons be specified for the refusal of the rezoning application, therefore be it resolved that council adopt the following as reasons for the refusal of the rezoning application in respect to nineteen twenty-three Bachmann Terrace. The reasons for refusal of the application by council are, A, the proposed development is too dense in light of the development in the surrounding community, and B, the proposed development does not fit well within the physical context, nor does it work well with the existing and planned function of the surrounding community. Mr. Mayor, for a little background, this is a street with...
Let me just ask, does anyone have any questions? Should we hold this? So we'll hold this and we'll come back and we'll put you back on the list, Councilor Hubley. Thank you. All right, so that item is... City of Ottawa, installation de gestion des eaux pluviales, Foster, quatre, deux, trois, cinq promenades, McKenna, Casey, Ville d'Atouat. Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? Councilor Harder?
No.
Nope?
No, just celebrate.
Okay. On the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried? Okay, so we'll come back to the item that Councilor Blowis has asked that we hold, official plan omnibus, modification d'ordre général au plan officiel. Councilor Blowis, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Mayor, but I have some questions first, and if staff can put the motion on if it went through, because I had trouble sending it. So maybe with a little indulgence here, I just want to go through the history of the lands I'm speaking about are the one, the employment lands off of Innes, the east urban, in the east urban area, the Orleans industrial, industrial lands. During the official plan process, we threw a number of things forward. One of them was about continuing the main street function along Innes Road, and I'm just trying to be clear in my mind what staff did with that, because it obviously didn't come back for that designation. I know you have studies underway, or you're starting the next part of the employment land study, and we certainly, and I know my colleagues in the East End, don't want to see employment lands lost, but we want to make sure that we can sort of kickstart some of this, because these lands have been sitting there vacant since the Champlain Sea receded. Can you just tell me, so what's the status of that from when it went into staff and you didn't come back with any recommended changes along the main street?
Mr. Mayor...
So just a moment. Counselor, could you tell us just second of your motion, please?
Counselor Minette.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, to respond...
I had to wake him up.
Mr. Mayor, through you, staff has received those discussions, Counselor, during the official plan review, and we have a subsequent review, as you've identified, the employment land study. And the assessment of Innes Road and the employment lands in that particular area that you're referring to will be examined through the employment land study, which is underway now, and we will have some conclusions in twenty fifteen.
Right. So the, one of the things we tried to do, and you helped us previously when we went through this, was saying, how can we sort of kickstart those employment lands? And of course, Counselor Minette had sort of set a bit of precedent with Brégil in the north industrial road area, where basically making it contingent, there have to be, has to be employment land development, or office space development, or industrial development that contains a certain number of jobs. I think unfortunately what happened was in the motion that got crafted, however that number came about, we went from how many jobs are actually expected in the whole industrial park, and at one point the number was two thousand. By the time we got through with the motion that I presented, we're two thousand on these specific lands. And I think that's causing grief, because we know realistically, and I think everybody around this table knows, realistically, you're not going to plunk two thousand jobs down without anything else happening. So I think Counselor Minette was right when he came forward with a phased approach for those lands in his ward, and I think you've been helping me with this motion that talks about a certain amount of space, square meters, would be developed for employment before anything else can happen, before any mixed uses, so that way we protect the employment potential. So the motion that's before us, and I should point something out, because I think staff had in their office space, I changed it to employment space, I just want to, I want to make sure that I'm upfront on that, that I'm not trying to slip this by. So in the last clause, I think you're pretty well in agreement with most of this, since most of this was crafted somewhere in your, in your office. Does this give us the catalyst we need to start getting jobs into those lands? And does this also protect us enough that we're not giving land, we're not giving land away, we don't own it, but we're not giving employment lands away for other uses without having that guarantee? So we want, we want our cake and we want to eat it too. We want those jobs, but we want to move this along, and it may be independent of your employment land study, as long as we show that the jobs are still there.
Mr. Mayor, the identification of floor space, for office space, we believe would be a more appropriate mechanism to use as opposed to the two thousand jobs. We are in agreement with that. That is consistent with Counselor Minette's Brégil development. So if we could just take one minute to review this motion before we could confirm would be great, just because this is the first time I'm reading the full motion. But the intent is there in terms of a switch to office space.
Okay, so then, at the risk of being into semantics, does it make a difference whether it says employment space or office space? Does that make a difference to staff?
Mr. Mayor, yes, it does.
So you'd be more comfortable with office space?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, before, before we move on, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, if whoever has that motion up on the screen can just change employment to office space, and if they can have a moment to review. Mr. Mayor, what staff was indicating was in the last line, in the last line, the last paragraph, that where we have employment space, thirty-two thousand square meters of employment space, staff feels more comfortable that it's office space. I think they can quantify that better, and I'm, I'm in agreement with that before this goes to any debate or any, any vote. And staff is just reviewing those clauses, because some of this is fairly new.
So you want to take the word employment, replace it with office? Okay.
And that's staff's suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah.
And does staff need more time to give us a comment on this, or I don't know if the Chair Planning Committee would have a comment? Counselor Hume?
I think I would rely, this is the Gibb Patterson lands we're talking about, right? And I'd rely on Ms. Sneddon's discussion on whether, how those employment lands are protected, which is what, what we want to do. We don't want, we don't want to see residential development occur and then never see the employment or the commercial development. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd rely on Ms. Sneddon's opinion.
May Ms. Sneddon?
Mr. Mayor, we are confident in the motion that is going forward and support Chair Hume's comments around the importance of ensuring that we are protecting those lands in so much as that employment lands come first, and employment is demonstrated first before further residential, so this motion will accomplish that.
Okay. Any other comments, Counselor Blowis?
Yeah, so just my final comment, just to confirm again what Ms. Sneddon said earlier when I asked about the, the main street arterial designation, that that is something that gets considered in the next study, the employment land study. I think I saw the nodding of heads there in unison, so, and that's fine. I mean, these lands have been there forever, they're not going to go away, and if that's the way it unfolds in the next round, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so to remind everyone, the motion has been amended to read office space instead of employment space. That's the only change, and it's seconded by Counselor Minette. On the motion as presented? Carried. Thank you. On the main report, item three? Carried.
Carried.
Thank you. The next item that we held was for Counselor Hubley. This is a zoning bylaw amendment part of nineteen and twenty-three Bachmann Terrace, and Counselor, if you could continue with the explanation for your amendment, which has been seconded by Counselor Harder, I believe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The situation in this particular application is we're taking a street that has twelve homes on it now, and we have an applicant that has purchased one of the lots that had a single family home on it, and wants to put twenty-five townhouses back to back, no front, back, or side yards, no parking other than the driveway spot, no storage for garbage, or snow, or anything on this property. And the issue here, because it's a zoning application, we can't deal with the snow or the garbage, but we can deal with the density issue. And in my view, and in the view of over a hundred residents that signed a petition against this proposal in the immediate surrounding area, it's too much to this street. We can't change the entrance to this road to put a four-way stop or anything, it's too close to a major intersection. There's nothing we could do to accommodate any of the impacts this density would cause in the area. Therefore, we have to, I ask support of council to reject this application, and we're going to work with the applicant to bring in something more reasonable for that location. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McCray, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, I wonder if Mr. Mitzi could take us through line by line through this motion, and if we could start at the top, I've got questions specific in line, so if staff could move the motion down, please?
Is this at the top?
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Mitzi, first of all, and if you can scroll it up as we're going through it, so if staff could, first of all, comment on why they recommended refusal?
Mr. Mayor, staff did not recommend refusal. We actually...
Sorry, sorry, I meant why they didn't refuse. Sorry, I apologize.
In terms of, yeah, I can take you through items A and B in terms of the reasons...
No, I don't want to do that. I want to know why staff promoted this application, in your own words, not from the motion.
Right. Mr. Mayor, it's true that townhouses are not permitted in the zoning on the site. It's a residential first density zone, which only permits detached houses, semi-detached, and this is a townhouse proposal. There's no question that it intensifies the use of this particular site. As a minor technical update, it is twenty-three units, it's eighteen back-to-back townhouses and five regular townhouses.
What does that mean, Mr. Mayor?
Back-to-back townhouses is that...
Mr. Mayor, if we could have staff to be less technical when they're describing it, and be fulsome if you can, because I need to understand this before I vote on this.
Back-to-back townhouses are townhouses where the rear wall is attached to the rear wall, it's a shared rear wall between townhouses. Eighteen of the twenty-three units are designed that way in this proposal. There are five townhouses that are standalone, so they don't share a rear wall with another building or other townhouse.
But they do share a wall with another house?
That's correct.
So they're not a single...
They share a side wall, that's correct.
So they're not standalone?
That's correct.
But you called them standalone?
No, they're not standalone, they're townhouses, so they have shared...
But you used the word standalone, okay, so just to be clear here. But you used the word standalone, okay, so just to be clear here. It's a townhouse?
They're townhouses, that's correct.
Okay, so continue.
So an assessment was done on this site, and acknowledged that it intensifies the site, but we felt that the site could accommodate this number with not adverse impact on the surrounding areas, in terms of, we've had, we've had input from other departments--
What does adverse impact mean?
Traffic impacts, for example. At 23 units, a traffic impact study is not normally required, and we felt that, at that level, that number of units, the site and the neighborhood could accommodate the traffic that's generated by this development.
And what's on either side of this particular piece of property? You said it's R1? Are there a whole bunch of homes, two or three homes? What's it look like on the, if I were to drive down the street, what would the look and feel be?
Semi-detached dwellings are located to the east of the site. Erwing Gate Park is to the north. Single-detached dwellings and a vacant lot are to the west. And to the rear is a commercial plaza, which is to the south.
Okay.
So the context is not townhouses.
Right, I understood that. So what are the other adverse impacts you looked at? You said traffic was one.
Well, that would be the primary one in a situation like this. Is there a sufficient parking available to the units that are being designed on-site?
Is the answer yes?
We think so.
Okay, but I'm asking to flush it out fully, how your department came to the decision to approve of this particular file, because it's very rare for my colleague in the last four years to have come to council asking us to do this. And I really want to flush this out, Mr. Mayor. And I'm wasting my time on the clock by continuing having to ask to flush this out.
Mr. Mayor, the criteria under the official plan for which a site like this is reviewed includes shadowing, privacy, access, traffic, parking, amenity space, and height.
And so every one of those boxes that your staff looked into checked off 100%, and there's absolutely no impact in any of those areas on the surrounding area by offering this unusual change to an R1?
Staff and the department felt that this proposal was supportable.
So then the answer then?
Is yes.
Is yes, okay. So if Clerk's Office could move the motion up a little bit more then? So, to the reasons, so, Mr. Mitzi, item A, the one comment is that the proposed development is too dense in light of the development in the surrounding community. Could you comment on that, please? Because so far, you've told me semis, commercial, parkland, R1. You haven't said anything more dense than a semi.
Item, on item A, is this proposal more dense than what's surrounding it?
Too dense, too dense. Let's use Counselor Hubley's own words, too dense.
Right. Our department recommended support for the application, therefore, we don't think it is too dense.
And why is that? You don't believe it's too dense?
For the reasons I explained earlier, that we felt it met the OP criteria for shadows, etc., etc.
Traffic, parking, okay, perfect, okay. Item B, which I think is a little more qualitative sometimes, proposed development does not fit well within its physical context. Could you comment on that, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, that's a somewhat subjective type of item. I mean, we're getting into the area of taste, or neighborhood character, et cetera. But are townhouses different than detached or semi? Yes. Could they be made to fit in by choice of brick color, or the type of landscaping that's done? It depends on the design that that proposal comes under.
Do you think fitting and the neighborhood character is important, Mr. Mitzi?
Yes, I do.
Exactly, okay. Nor does it work well with the existing and planned function of the surrounding community. Could you flush that out, please?
Work well lends itself to operational aspects of a development, in terms of access, parking, et cetera. And as I pointed out, and as the report states, we felt it was supportable from that point of view.
Counselor Hubley refers to the planned function of the surrounding community. Can you comment on that, please? Because again, I find this highly unusual, and I really want to make sure I understand where Counselor Hubley's going with this.
Well, certainly, the planned context was not townhouses for this site.
And what was the planned context, and how long ago was that in place?
I could not tell you, Mr. Mayor, when that, when the previous zoning was put in place, the residential first density.
But people who--
But the planned, but the planned context is for singles or semis.
Sure, so anyone who built or bought in that area at the time would not anticipate 18 back-to-back towns and five standalone towns to be in this R1 site at the time?
Yes, I think that argument could be made.
Okay, so tell me about the planned function of the surrounding community. What does that mean?
Planned function usually relates to the planned land use, and that's the traffic that might be generated in a neighborhood based on its approved zoning. If that zoning changes, for instance, in this case going from a single-detached or semi-detached neighborhood to a townhouse development, we would look at how that new proposal affects the planned function, or the ability to be serviced, or the access and traffic generated by the site, and in this case, we're okay with it.
And what, how many singles would fit in that area?
If it were--
Roughly speaking?
If it was severed, I'm advised four.
So the department doesn't think there's any deleterious effects of switching from Four to 23, so almost eight times the number of expected dwellings on that property.
Mr. Mayor, in short, we acknowledge this is an intensification of the site. We're also saying we can support it, and that is the department's position.
Okay, and my final question, Mr. Mayor, about this motion. And I'm not saying this to put words in your mouth, Mr. Mitzi, so if it comes out this way, I'm not looking for, I'm not trying to play gotcha here, but do I assume that staff then do not support the motion portion that talks about reasons for refusal? Not the refusal itself, that's obvious, you don't support that, but do you not agree with reasons for refusal, A and B?
Technically, no, we don't agree with the reasons, or we wouldn't have a supportive report. However, I can advise that we've had some discussion with the counselor about speaking to the applicant to lessen the intensification of the proposal, and we hope, as the counselor has mentioned, that going forward over the next few weeks or months, we will have further discussions, and maybe a day will come when we come back with a revised proposal.
Sure, but to the mayor, I mean, if we move in this direction, Mr. Mitzi, I mean, staff have already said no to refusal. You've said that you technically disagree with these points, so if council actually approves of this motion, we're de facto going up against our own staff? And I just want to be clear here, where staff are going to go with this, because if it's going back to the drawing board to work with the Ward Council and the residents, then that's a whole different ballgame than this outright, let's not do this, we don't like it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I may defer to the city solicitor, but yes, if council adopts Counselor Hubley's motion, you've rejected the recommendations of our department. That doesn't mean that, in the end, there will be an OMB hearing during the timeframe between now and then, we will try to revise it.
I didn't raise the OMB, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not interested in that, I'm more interested--
Sorry, Counselor, with all due respect, you asked a question, you cannot interrupt him. Your period is over, thank you very much.
I understand, but that wasn't my question.
Counselor Clark?
Well, we appear to be able to separate church and state. We favor intensification as a planning department, that's laudable, it's also part of the provincial policy statement. But it seems to me that, that allowing what is known to be totally out of keeping with the neighborhood to be ignored while you're doing a zoning bylaw amendment doesn't make any sense. You can separate out the zoning and good planning reasons for supporting intensification, but you can't separate the Siamese twin over here, which is 23 units in a very compact area, which totally destroys the street fabric. Now, that Siamese twin is what's causing the need to do this. My, my sense of this is that, that planning department is doing its function, its function is to support intensification. Unfortunately, in this case, it's, it may be read as supporting 23 units six inches from the major intersection. And I, I look at this and say to myself, well, somehow or other, I cannot support the planning department's rationale to accept the intensification here, knowing what we do know about it. So I, I believe that we need to, we need to send this back to the drawing board as far as the zoning is concerned, until we can get a better picture of what the Siamese twin looks like. Maybe we'll be able to separate them. In the meantime, I believe the counselor has a legitimate request to, to reject this application at this time, and it's not a rejection of the planning department's rationale, it's basically a rejection of this unknown Siamese twin lurking over our shoulder. And I, I think we should be supportive of Mr. Hubley on this particular item.
Counselor Hubley, I believe you've spoken on this item, so thank you. Counselor Chernyschenko? Wrap up at the end?
Yeah. Really, I suppose it's, it's comment more than anything. I find this a perplexing one, because I've seen so many proposals, I'm sure Counselor Hobbs and, and Holmes and Clark and others will, will get where I'm coming from, where similarly out of context, excessively dense applications have sailed through Planning Committee, despite the large number of delegations and the objections along similar lines, with the argument that, well, you wanted intensification, it's the official plan, it's provincial policy, you've got intensification, and, and the majority of those are ones that I would have wanted to send back and say, sorry, too dense, too out of, out of context, go for increased density, go for a modest change in character, but this is too much. And yet, we've seen those go right through. So here I am, looking at this, thinking, well, do I support a colleague who feels it's too dense and, and too much for the exact same reasons? I would have wanted to have stopped those in the past, I guess. Yes, I do, in the hopes that that's starting a new direction, where we do more of this. We become much clearer about what is an appropriate increase in density and change in character, but don't just run with it because it's denser and, and new and going to increase our tax base. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson, please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know this property pretty well, and I can completely understand where Counselor Hubley is coming from. One of the things in the official plan is that it, we're supposed to be a development which is compatible with the community of which it's located. And I think it's one of the things for Planning Committee, that the staff, too, to take a harder look at. There tends to be an overemphasis on increasing density, so we don't have to increase the urban boundary, and often not enough attention played to the quality of the community. And I think you can still get good density while doing more on the quality. So I think in many respects, in going to a reason for it, I think that reason is a particularly important one that, that should be followed. And I think it's a, it's a kind of a funny little piece of land that was, that is not too accessible to getting in and out of as well, which also creates a problem, it has a lot of older development in there. And the, so I would suggest that they, that you do support this motion, and that the emphasis be put on the, how the compatibility with the surrounding community, which I think would be very reasonable to use. Thank you.
Counselor Eglin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a quick question to follow some of the dialogue between staff and Counselor McCray. We sort of got an answer, but I think I'd like Legal to weigh in on it. If we support this motion today, what is the likely impact on a possible OMB appeal?
Mr. Mayor, I can state that every time council has refused a zoning amendment or an official plan amendment, they have been appealed to the Terminus Board in this term. So I would expect there will be an, an appeal to the Terminus Board.
No, no, I appreciate it that it may be appealed, I'm asking if you can give us any indication of whether you think this motion, if passed, will have an impact on the Board in their decision-making process?
Mr. Mayor, the short answer would be yes, in that it is council's statement as to the reasons why it's refusing the application. Council is bound since 2007 to provide reasons whenever it refuses a zoning and an official plan request, and this motion is intended, because it was a recommendation of adoption, there were, of course, no reasons for refusal on the report, and this motion is meant to fill that void, and based upon the debate that took place at Planning Committee, provide reasons why council would be refusing the application.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
All right, Counselor Holmes, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question. So, should this go to the OAB? I assume the developer will put our staff on the stand.
Mr. Mayor, that is typically the case. The developer will have his or her own witness, and they would typically also subpoena member staff.
And the staff will take their normal position of intensity at all costs? Is that correct? Hmm, nobody's going to answer this.
Well, I think they'll defend the city physician. They'll defend the city--
Yes, the city physician will be adopted by our staff on the stand, against the council and the people who live in the neighborhood. But this has happened to me for years. You know, it's intriguing to see it's finally hitting the outer suburbs, there's nothing different about what has been happening here for years, with the planning department being the professional planning advocates, and it's only the professionals that should be speaking in their opinion, and the neighbors are NIMBYs and should not be listened to. Now, that's gone on for years here. I'm intrigued to see it again happening here. But council and Planning Committee have been delighted with it happening in my ward, so I have no sympathy for when it happens to somebody else's ward.
Well, what can I say? Okay, Counselor Hubley, to wrap up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues for their very, very good questions and the points they made. I should have, at the outset, provided a little more background to this, too. The original application that came in was 25 units. We held a rare and unusual public meeting in early July, because the applicant wanted this to move forward through the summer. There was a great turnout at the meeting. Afterwards, because of the serious concerns with the density that was raised by the community, they did drop the number to 23. However, my feeling, and I believe that of the community, was 23 didn't solve the problem. You couldn't use those two spots for visitor parking, garbage, snow, and everything else. It, it, we needed some more work. So that's a little background to it. I'm hoping that nobody compares this to something in the inner core, because we're talking about, if you look at it on Google Maps, a very, very narrow street that, as I said earlier, comes out onto a blind turn right near a major intersection, so we can't put a four-way stop, we can't do any traffic measures to try to cope with the tripling of the size of the street. So, Mr. Mayor, just to wrap up, I, I'm really hoping I can count on the support of my colleagues to refuse this application and allow us to work with the applicant, instead of at the OMB, work with the applicant and the community to try to find some use that would fit our policies. One last point, I did mention at planning, to my colleagues' points, that we have to look at our intensification policy. It's more mature now, we have some examples like this, and, and what Counselor Sherashenko was talking about, that maybe we need to look at that policy so that we add another factor for staff to look at. Because as Mr. Mitzi pointed out correctly, the planner was very good on this file, she was only following the guidelines that the previous council has laid out for. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues.
Thank you, Counselor Hubley. So we have a motion, is Counselor Harder still with us? It's Counselor Tierney? All right, so now the seconder is Counselor Tierney. Yays and nays on Counselor Hubley's motion?
I think you have to, you should call-- I think you have to, you should call yays and nays on the rejection, and then adopt the reasons. Because if council seeks to approve it, then you don't need the reasons. And maybe Mr. Mark can help. I'm just, I just want to get into a procedural quagmire.
Mr. Mayor, my advice actually is adopt the reasons, so that you have a full motion for refusal with reasons.
Okay.
And then vote on the refusal, and if perchance that motion for refusal were to be defeated, then one could introduce a staff recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
So we have to approve items A and B as the reasons, correct, Mr. Mark? So on the reasons carried? All right. And then yays and nays on the report?
Recommending rejection.
Recommending rejection, which is supporting Counselor Hubley.
Counselor Manette?
We...
Counselor McCray?
Yes.
Counselor Blowis?
Yep.
Counselor Alshantiiri?
Yes.
Counselor Harder? Counselor Holmes?
No.
Counselor Hume?
No.
Counselor Hobbs?
Yes.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Concierge Duras?
We...
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cadri?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes.
Concierge Fleury?
We...
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counselor Egli?
Yes.
Concierge Blay?
We...
Counselor Chernyschenko?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Twenty-one yays, two nays.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adopt reports. Counselors Hume and Fleury, please. Counselor Hume?
I don't worry about that anymore.
Motions to adopt reports.
Ah, motions to adopt reports. Move by myself, seconded by Counsel Fleury, that the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update, Council requires and motions for the period ending 27 of August 2014, and Planning Reports 74A and 75 be received and adopted as amended.
Carried. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. This is on the Election Compliance Audit Committee adding another member on suspension. Carried. Counselor Hume, seconded by Counselor Duras. Counselor Hume, if you could introduce...
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you said it well. The clerk is looking for an opportunity to add a member to the audit committee, or to the compliance audit committee, to ensure that there are enough members should someone, should there be a request for a compliance audit, which we hope there never will be, but nonetheless, we need to be prepared.
Okay, on the motion. Carried. A notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Counselor Blay, seconded by myself. Counselor, if you'd like to introduce it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by Mayor Watson. Whereas the city has provided $75,000 of interviewer funding to the West End community groups to assist in responding to the environmental assessment for the expansion of the CARP landfill, and whereas the city has approved $50,000 of interviewer funding for East End community groups to assist in responding to the environmental assessment for the Capital Region Resource Recovery Center, and the East End community groups have devised that they require additional funds to respond appropriately to this ongoing environmental assessment, and whereas council recognizes the importance of this issue and staff have advised that this request can be accommodated with the one-time and unforeseen account, therefore be it resolved that the contribution for East End community groups be increased by $25,000 to be funded from the one-time and unforeseen account, and that the agreement with the East End group be amended accordingly.
Okay, so that will be discussed at the next meeting. Thank you, Counselor Blay. The next is also by, a notice of motion by Counselor Blay. Counselor Blay, if you'd like to introduce this cider issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Whereas McCannell Ciderie, a hard cider operation proposed for 6015, Frank Kenny Road in the City of Ottawa is applying for a manufacturer's license and a By the Glass Manufacturers Limited Liquor Sales License through the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario, and whereas a resolution of council supporting this application is necessary for the By the Glass License approval from the AGCO, and be it resolved that the City of Ottawa support McCannell Ciderie, a local apple cider operation, in its application to the AGCO for a By the Glass Manufacturers Limited Liquor Sales License.
Okay, thank you. No, we did it just for breweries and wineries, cider wasn't included. A cider of relief. Counselor Manette has a notice of motion, seconded by Counselor Blowis. Counselor, if you'd like to introduce it.
Heart of Orleans Business Improvement Area and the Société Fracole Antillane de Patrimoine et de D'Issoir d'Aléas, SWFO, with the support of the local ward councillors, have proposed partnering with the city for installation of 32-inch historical interpretive panels, celebrating the unique heritage of Orleans within the road allowance along St. Joseph Boulevard in the community of Orleans. And whereas the SWFO and Heart of Orleans BIA have designed and constructed the historical interpretive panels with the support of the ward councillors, and whereas the historical interpretive panels depict life as it was lived in the 1950s to 60s, true stories representing the cultural, economic, social, and agricultural fabric of Orleans society at that time, and whereas the historical interpretive panels are defined as signs under the Signs on Road Bylaw Number 2003-520, as amended of the City of Ottawa, and Section 4 of the Signs and Road Bylaw stipulates that no person shall place a sign on the highway within the city except as provided for in the bylaw, and whereas although the proposed signs are not listed in the exemption provision of the bylaw, staff have indicated that they are comfortable with the signs as proposed, whereas the Heart of Orleans BIA has agreed to assume all maintenance and liability for the signs once installed on city road allowance, whereas there is $25,000 remaining in capital account for the now completed St. Joseph Boulevard reconstruction project that could be used to fund interpretive panels, and account funds will be returned to reserves if not expended. Therefore be it resolved that the city council approve the waiver of Section 4 of Signs on Road Bylaw Number 2003-520, as amended, to permit the installation of 32-inch historical interpretive panels by the Société Fracole Antillane de Patrimoine et de D'Issoir d'Aléas, SWFO, and be further resolved that the city council approve a one-time grant of $22,394 to the Heart of Orleans Business Improvement Area to offset the costs of design, construction, and installation of the historical interpretive panels, to be funded from capital account for the now completed St. Joseph Boulevard reconstruction project, and direct staff to amend the current agreement between the City of Ottawa and the Heart of Orleans BIA to incorporate provisions dealing with the maintenance liability issues related to the historical interpretive panels.
Okay. Counselor, this isn't before us, so it's a notice...
I would ask to waive the rules.
Okay.
If I can get a mic.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we waive the rules. These panels, these heritage panels are in place, they've been installed, the money was set aside the previous term from this capital project, which included the roundabout, et cetera, and somewhere along the way, this fell through, and I want to say, a bureaucratic crack, and we're only dragging it on even further. The money's there, it was part of the project, it was set aside by the BIA. The panels are in place, so I don't know what we're going to do, retroactively say, let's not approve this. So I would ask that we waive the rules and just carry it.
Okay, to waive the rules. Carried. On the motion. Carried. Thank you, Counselor Blowis. Counselor Duras?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. It says it goes back in the reserves, treasurer, but it seems to me, whenever we have a capital project, we use those funds for offsetting other projects in terms of the works and projects. So this isn't going to go back to reserves, if I'm not mistaken. This would be going back to help balance other projects. And my second question is, a lot of the BIAs have reserves...
Counselor, with all due respect, we just passed this motion, so...
Well, I was going, I was on the board, and when...
What's that?
I was pressing the button when you were asking it to be carried.
Yeah, well, finish the final question, or you can put in a written inquiry. It's $25,000. That's...
Well, if it's carried, I will dissent on, I will dissent on the second, be it further resolved. And I'll follow up with those questions with treasurer.
Okay, so record Counselor Duras's dissent. Agreed? Great. Thank you. Next notice of motion is by Counselor Manette, seconded by Counselor Blay. You might want to just give a summary, you don't have to read the whole thing in the record, Counselor.
The motion's longer than the...
But it was very interesting, the previous motion. Okay, so therefore, this one, I'll keep it shorter. Therefore be it resolved that city council waive Section 791 of the Tourism and Public Service Sign Policy to allow for the installation of customized service club signs for Cardinal Creek, Gruenswright's, and Followbra communities, as described above, which will include a community event message panel with the same provision as for a similar panel on the community name signs, on the condition that all future costs for ongoing maintenance for these signs be the responsibility of the community associations.
Okay, so we'll deal with that at the next meeting. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? Any other motions? Introduce bylaws. And Counselor Hume also has an addendum to this motion, if he could introduce that as well.
Sorry, I do. Okay. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion, introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed, with the exception of HH, a bylaw of the City of Ottawa to amend the official plan for the City of Ottawa to correct policies adopted as a result of the Official Plan Amendment 150, and to update the policies to coincide with the current transportation master plan. And I'm sure that there's a legal reason why we're doing all of the other ones, except HH.
That's right. Carried. And on the main motion, Counselor?
Um...
Three readings?
Yep. Sorry, I only have one more, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, all the three readings are carried.
Oh, right, okay.
Confirmation bylaw?
That the, move by myself, seconded by Counsel Fleury, that the following bylaws be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of council meeting of the 27th of September.
Carried. Inquiries, I have two. The first is from myself.
Did I say September?
In 2007, the owner of the property at 352 Somerset West, TKS Holdings, commenced construction, including underpinning work that was not to be covered by the building permit, and the building suffered a partial collapse in October 2007. The city was required to take action to brace and stabilize the building, and this was completed in February 2008. The building has remained in the braced and stabilized condition since that time. The city also took the owner to court and was ordered costs in that action. Council has approved the suspension of encroachment fees of the property in anticipation of such work commencing first in 2012, and again this year, at an estimated cost of approximately $20,000 per year. During the past year, the ownership of the building has indicated that reconstruction efforts are imminent. I would ask the director and chief building official and the general manager, Planning and Growth, to provide council update on, one, permits that have been applied for by the owner, and permits that have been approved, issued with respect to this project; two, the total value of encroachment fees waived to date; three, any other information that might be available regarding the status of the project that have been announced previously by the ownership; four, what options the city has to increase encroachment fees, costs, since we have not seen the owner move to repair the building. This is the Somerset House building. It's been an eyesore, quite frankly, for years. Precious little work, lots of promises by the owner. I spoke to him a couple of weeks ago, and in a not-too-friendly exchange, told him that I'm fed up and the residents are fed up, that's an important intersection of the corner of Bank and Somerset, and we're constantly told, promise, 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 nothing ever gets done. It's boarded up, the walls are braced, and we gave this gentleman a break on his encroachment fees to help him along, and he committed that he would get the work done, and it's not being done. So I, and I think I spoke to Counselor Holmes about this, and her constituents are fed up. Counselor Duras has an inquiry.
Thank you. With the resumption of September volumes of traffic and transit, what steps are the city taking to ensure that construction contractors do not disrupt traffic during peak hours? Thank you.
Thank you. And adjournment. Counselor Hume?
At the meeting of, oh, and it was, I said September at our last one, that the meeting of August 27th be adjourned.
Carried. Carried. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. Meeting adjourned.
I don't know what...